Okay, we have some special guests here tonight that we'll introduce here shortly, but before we get into our regular business, we're gonna open this session up to our public hearing. We have an application from Ted Hall requesting a rezone from A1 agriculture to R2 residential for property located at 1971 Highway 157, Lookout, Mountain, Georgia, tax map 0-012-008. Is Mr. Hall in the room tonight?
Yes.
Okay, right here, okay. Would you like to speak and tell us what your application here and what you're wanting to do with this property change?
I'm trying to get it rezoned in order to sell it.
Okay, so you're wanting to sell this property and have the zoning changed to R2? Okay. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this?
Yes, sir, I do as well. I'm Mark Richmond, I'm actually gonna be the buyer of the property. I live on Lookout as well. So I do speak in favor of that. Part of the reason for this is we're subdividing the property, and Mr. Hall's keeping a portion, and I'm keeping a portion, and to do that, we need to be in a legally conforming manner where A1 doesn't... we don't meet the criteria for A1, and so we'd like to rezone to R2 to meet that criteria.
Okay, alright. Is anyone here in opposition of this tonight? Anyone in opposition here present tonight? Okay, this did go before our planning and zoning committee. We have our chairman, Philip Cantrell, here with us tonight. Philip, can you tell us about y'all's meeting and the outcome of what the recommendation is from the planning commission?
I can. They brought this to us in, I believe, in November, is that correct? Or January?
Uh, January.
January, okay. Brought it to us in January, and as he was saying, is an area there where it needs to be R2. There's already four residents on the 12 acres. The commission didn't see anything wrong with, you know, with going with R2. The way the roads configured around the property and everything, so it would meet that criteria. So we did approve.
So was that a unanimous vote from the planning?
Oh, I think so. Yeah.
It was unanimous, okay. Is anyone else here to speak on this matter? Okay. That will end a session of our public hearing, and then we will open up our regular scheduled meeting. And we're gonna make one change here on our agenda. We have the new business item one of approval or disapproval of the zoning, but we're gonna come back to that in just a minute because I've got some really special people here tonight that I really want to make y'all aware of and introduce you to. And we have a proclamation declaring that on Wednesday, March 21st, is gonna be Down Syndrome Day in Walker County. So we have some of our special people sitting here at the table, and before I introduce them, I wanna take and get my proclamation here and read this to y'all. It's gotten buried here, I should've already had this pulled out. Sorry about that. There it is. Okay. So by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation, Down Syndrome Day. Whereas Down Syndrome is the most commonly occurring chromosomal... chromosomal ad... I can't even say that. Admirality resulting when a person possesses three copies of the 21st chromosome instead of two. And whereas each year, one in every 691 children are born with Down Syndrome in the United States, representing approximately 6,000 births nationwide, and 90 to 100 births in Georgia. And whereas while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvement in the length and quality of life of those affected, more investigation is needed into the cause and treatment of Down Syndrome. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles in the community. And whereas on Down Syndrome Day, many groups and individuals will work to educate the public about Down Syndrome, encouraging acceptance and inclusion of those who are... let me slow down. Of those with the condition, and therefore I, Shannon K. Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim March 21st, 2018, is Down Syndrome Day in Walker County. So I'm gonna sign this proclamation. And then I've invited some of my special guests here tonight, those representing this community to help bring awareness to Down Syndrome. So we have Trey with us tonight. Trey, welcome to everybody. Alright. And then we have Ms. Grayson here with us. And then, see, I guess it was about two years ago, Grayson, on her senior year, was the homecoming queen at Gordon Lee High School, and became the princess for the homecoming event. And I was there to see her being crowned, and it was just a great day, and she was so excited, and I couldn't think of anybody more deserving to be homecoming queen at that football game. And then we have Seth, right?
Yes.
Got our buddy Seth here?
Yes.
He came to be a part of our meeting today. He's got his Alabama hat on.
Roll tide!
Alright. And then we've got Silas here with us. Silas is supporting the Bulldogs. He's got his hat on.
Go Georgia!
Oh, Georgia!
So we've got some real enthusiasts here, and I've got a little story about Silas, too. It's probably been about, probably two years ago, I had this tradition with my kids that we go to Chick-fil-A on Saturday mornings. And little Daniel got over in the play area and got up high, up into the PlayStation that they have, and he was scared to death to come down. Well, in walks Silas in the door, and I'm sitting there thinking, I'm too big to go up into this PlayStation. And somebody gonna get that on video. So I'm just like, come on down, Daniel, come on down. And Silas saw what was going on, and he said, I'll go get him. So Silas came to the rescue and went all the way to the top, and was there with little Daniel, and took him by the hand and helped bring him down from the PlayStation, and they've been best buddies ever since. So Silas, thank you for rescuing Daniel at Chick-fil-A. Yes, absolutely. So, while we've got everybody here, because that's why we wanted... one reason I'm gonna do this first, I didn't want anybody sneaking out, before we took a picture with our proclamation here. So I wanted to get a picture with each one of you individually, and then we'll get a picture of us all together. Does that sound like a plan?
Yes.
Alright, alright, well, let's do it. Alright, so let's all get in here together. Come on over here, Trey. Princess, you know she has to be called the princess, because you can just tell she's the princess. Alright, you're here, I'll let y'all hug this.
Seth.
Okay, Seth, come over here. Alright, we got Silas coming here a little closer. Alright, we all good? Seth, hug everybody in there. We've got one more. Okay, we'll get back here in order, and we're gonna go back to our item number one on our agenda, and this is on the application for rezone. So, bear with me here just a second. So I'm gonna go ahead and approve this request. So we'll sign this here tonight and enter this into the record, and we'll approve this as requested and submit it. Okay, so we've got that. And since we're jumping around here a little bit, we're gonna go back here just a little bit since we had our special guest in, and you have the minutes from the February 22nd meeting that we need also approved into our record. So those of you that have looked at this and attended the meeting or was here, does anybody see any corrections or have any changes or anything we need to talk about on the minutes from the 22nd of February? Alright, hearing none, we'll approve those into the record. Roll tide is still here. Okay, so we got that handled. We can get a little out of order on our agenda, and we've got fun stuff to do. Okay. Okay, this is all on that. Okay, item number three, we have resolution R-005-18 to identify an attorney for Walker County Legal Matters and Services. So resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to identify and appoint a county attorney responsible for Walker County's legal matters and services. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state of Georgia, November 1982 and effective July 1, 1983, provides an Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1, thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly responsible or reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County, governing authority of Walker County, and whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County utilizing the professional services of former county attorney Robin Rogers until February 28th, 2018, and whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County has simultaneously appointed J. Matthew Williamson to serve the county attorney on March 1, 2018. Whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County wishes to identify and appoint the legal representative responsible for Walker County legal matters in the matter that recognizes the need to assure that the county's legal matters are handled completely and to ensure that the cost of legal representations is managed appropriately. Therefore, be resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, as follows. Number one, any matter that originated prior to the appointment of J. Matthew Williamson to serve as the county attorney shall be handled as follows. A, former county attorney Robin Rogers is assigned to represent Walker County in matters that originated during his tenure as the county attorney, except in such matters as sole commissioner may desire. B, sole commissioner or his designees shall communicate with former county attorney Robin Rogers regarding all legal matters in which representation should be transferred to J. Matthew Williamson. C, notwithstanding Section 1A here within, Robin Rogers may transfer representation of the county to J. Matthew Williamson in any pending case or other legal matters which in the opinion of Robin Rogers, the county's best interest may be served. D, upon any transfer of legal representation, Robin Rogers shall make any court filings necessary in the preceding litigations to effect the transfer and shall inform any parties to litigation or parties concerning in any ongoing legal matter or the transfer of representation. Two, any other legal matter originating from the time period not specifically assigned at a public meeting shall be handled exclusively by J. Matthew Williamson, who in his capacity as county attorney may be served at 101 South Duke Street, Lafette, Georgia, 30728. Three, to the extent any previous resolutions of the sole commissioner of Walker County conflicts with the directives contained here within, this resolution shall govern and control. Sole resolved and adopted this eighth day of March, 2018. Shannon K. Whitfield, sole commissioner. So, all the legalese we had to cover there, what we're doing here is we're making a change in our county attorney, so let me give you a little background on this. When I took office, I appointed Robin Rogers over, who lives in Date County, has an office in Date County, as our county attorney. He has done a fantastic job providing that service to us, and he and I have become pretty good friends through the process, and I highly respect and value him very much. I think the situation we have is he must be the only good attorney in Date County because he stays absolutely covered up, and he has license in three states, and he just works around the clock and stays extremely busy and does outstanding work, and everything that he's done for us in Walker County government has all been just perfect and no issues with his quality of work at all. But we had an opportunity surface where we could take and bring a full-time attorney on staff that would allow us to move things quicker and work and focus on a staff basis to address some of our goals and objectives that we have with getting all of our ordinances and codes and things updated. So when I got to looking at how busy Robin was and the amount of time and energy that was going to need to be spent over the last several months, and also what that cost would be for this extra work that we've got to do, I figured out that we could bring someone on staff that would actually overall would save us money over what we spent last year even. So this is not always about spending more, this is about spending less overall. So I'm very excited to introduce to you now, Matt Williamson is here with us tonight. He started on the first of March, and he's already knocked out a whole bunch of stuff that was piled up on my desk. So I'm thrilled to have him here, and he has been a valued asset to us and knows he's gonna... I know he's gonna do a great job. And again, Robin has performed a very good service to us. I would highly recommend him to anyone. There's no issues there at all. Robin and I had a very good conversation. He understands, and I think it was a lot of relief to him to take some of the load off of his plate. He still represents Date County, does a great job for them. I spoke to Ted Remley the other day, who's their chairman, and he said, yeah, Robin told me, and he said, I think he's really relieved. He said, because he's got too much going on. So I feel like that this is a good situation for everybody. I did talk back in the campaign that the previous administration was spending a tremendous amount of money on a staff attorney and had an assistant and a large expense account, and that the budget for that department was just unbelievable how much they were spending. And so having outside counsel, if you don't have a lot of issues to deal with, is more reasonable, but when you've got as many issues as we've got to deal with and getting our codes and our ordinances and all updated, it's gonna be much more cost-effective to have someone on staff, and it can be a real asset to the team. So thank you, Matt, for accepting this position, and you've already done an outstanding job, and I know only the best is to come. So thank you. Item number four, performance partners agreements between the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agents, GMA/HS, and the Walker County Government. Okay, we have a grant award here from Homeland Security in the amount of $11,447, and then we maxed that on a 50-50 basis of $11,447 for a total expenditure of $22,894. This is an ongoing grant that the county's been eligible for for several years to offset costs for our emergency management and homeland security efforts. And so Chief Hodge had planned to be here tonight to speak on this and give y'all more detail about it, but he's actually overseeing a cave rescue at the moment. So we had someone injured that had a fractured leg, and they was having to do an extrication out of one of our caves in our community. So he's not here with us tonight, but I believe you'll find this to be pretty straightforward, and anytime we can get free money, we'll take it. So we appreciate their hard work in going after this grant and keeping this alive each year and bringing money back to the county. Any questions on this one? Okay, so you've got all of the information there in your packet.
Do you have the name of this guy that's already...
I'm not sure exactly how he's gonna spend all these funds, but we will make sure they are spent very wisely and appropriate for this grant so we stay eligible to be able to get it again next year. So we don't wanna mess this up and miss this opportunity again. Okay, this is all part of that grant. Lots of pages there. Okay, I think that's the place I'm supposed to sign. Alright. Item number five is a memorandum of understanding, State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant. Also, this is another grant that we get, and we have in a prior meeting approved the acceptance of this grant, but they come back to us and said that we needed some additional documentations of a memorandum of understanding. So I'm not gonna read all of this to you, but I do wanna call your attention to a couple of paragraphs in here on the second page where it talks about the services cooperation here. Starts out and says that Dodd-Cwirley shall render and provide the following services that includes, but are not limited to, provide oversight, direction, marketing, outreach, and administrative duties such as outcome data collection and reporting, provide program eligibility determination, assist program participants in navigating the mental health system and in identifying formal and informal support, assemble youth and family teams, as well as schedule and facilitate ongoing team meetings, help determine needs and resources, monitor the implementation of teams, plans, make collateral contacts, coordinate with systems of care, partners in order to meet the individualized needs of participants, provide directions to a multitude staff covering four counties, including training, mentoring, and support, co-facilitate the thinking for a change program as needed. Walker County, Georgia, shall render and provide the following services that included, but are not limited. Walker County shall render Dodd-Cwirley for services at a rate of 25.75 per hour. Walker County shall reimburse Dodd-Cwirley for mileage at state approval rate of 54 cents a mile. This thinking for a change program is something that I wanted to point out to you. This is a very, very valuable program, and Dodd-Cwirley does an outstanding job with this program. And there's a lot of our kids and our youth that struggle with a lot of issues, and a lot of times when they are dealing with the juvenile court system, trying to navigate through the court system, trying to navigate through the mental health services, identifying support groups, and different things that they do can be overwhelming and can be very confusing, and it's very easy for our youth to get discouraged, to drop out, to not follow the guidelines. And so this is a very, very key program for our youth. This is a program that juvenile judge Steve Ellis finds very worthwhile. He takes every opportunity he can to direct our youth to this program because it produces results and brings a lot of value. So we're just thrilled to be able to partner with someone as quality as this, and this is something where we get some grant funding. And I know with Matt Williamson being prior to this appointment has been with the Public Defender's Office, so Matt, I know you probably run into this a lot, and you probably can add some additional thoughts on this as well.
Certainly, Commissioner, I've practiced in juvenile court, represented juvenile clients, and a lot of times when they are ordered to complete mental health treatment as a result of some determination by the judge that is necessary, the judge will mandate that they attend school, the judge will mandate that they take their medication as prescribed, and this program really helps facilitate and foster cooperation with different service providers that are in place in our county, and provides an opportunity for these kids, many of whom are from deprived... or in deprived situations, provides a service for them that they cannot get otherwise. And as you stated, it is a program that produces excellent results, and so I know that our juvenile judge thinks highly of it, and I've seen its effectiveness firsthand, and I'm just proud that the county has the opportunity to help facilitate this program.
Yeah, it's a real honor to participate in this because this is something that's going over and above, and bringing some funding to this, and our accounting staff led by Greg McConnell, you know, they have to handle the back ends of the accounting and keeping up with all this. So this creates some extra work for our team, but the value of this program and the results that it brings to our community, it's well worth the county's involvement to participate in this. So just speak very highly of this program and wanna see this continue. Okay, last item on our agenda here. Joe's done a great job again this month working with all the department leaders and getting our statistical data pulled together. Our folks at our animal shelter continue to do an outstanding job. They work in a really tough job having to deal with the amount of animals that we have coming in. So we had 101 dogs that were either adopted or rescued or returned to the owners in the month of February. It's an outstanding number, 17 cats. So we've had 167 dogs year-to-date, 25 cats has been able to be placed. In compliance for our code enforcement, they've gone out and have reviewed 599 properties in our county that they've done a visual inspection on that are in compliance with our codes. They did find 143 that had violations, and so they had to give a citation and give them time to clean up those properties. We have been able to close 42 cases in the month of February, so that brought our total up year-to-date to 78 closed cases. So when you see that, what that means is that 78 properties in Walker County in two months that have gotten in compliance with our code and ordinances that we have for property matters. But to have 78 already in a two-month period, I think speaks very highly of our code enforcement officers because when you think about it, January and February are tough months because you have a lot of cold weather. We had ice and snow in January, gets dark early, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock, it gets dark. It's hard for people to get engaged and get outside and get things cleaned up, and then our officers to go back and follow up and do those final inspections. So I'm very, very proud that we've been able to close 78 cases in two months. I think that speaks very highly of our team. Also, the fire department had 569 total responses for the month of February. 489 of those were with our quick response vehicles, so that just shows the value once again that those units are bringing. We're answering more calls, more and more of those are medical-related calls, and having our fire people, staff members at six stations has really paid off for us in being able to get to people in need much faster. Our roadside trash pickup has continued to be amazing, the amount of trash that one staff member can pick up with some inmates each month, so 11,920 pounds of trash that was picked up. Our total nights booked at Mountain Cove Farm was 13. Planning single-family new home constructions, we had 13 in January, we only had three in February, but again, we're into the winter months, but I heard Kristy Parker mention earlier, you issued how many permits today for new homes?
Four, single-family and one multifamily.
So we...
Today.
Today. Just in one day, she issued five, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's nine for the month.
Nine for the month already in March. So, we've got a lot of people that are looking to move to Walker County because of the great things that are going on here. So, there's a lot of excitement in Walker County. People recognize that and looking to come be a part of our great community. Media impressions, there was thirty-three stories published in different media outlets that Joe was able to document. We've added a hundred-and-eighty-eight new Facebook followers to our Facebook page, which is outstanding. Joe was able to get thirty-five Facebook posts in. And I think this goes to show you, there's a lot of people got their eye on Walker County. We still had over twenty thousand visitors to our website, so we had twenty-three thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-one visits to our website. So, a lot of people's looking and watching and seeing what's going on because we're consistently averaging over twenty thousand visitors to our website every month. We had a hundred-and-twenty-six people go online and subscribe to our monthly newsletter. So, if you are not currently getting our monthly newsletter, you wanna go to the website and a little box will pop up, you just put your name and email address and you're signed up. You can also go to the website and look at the previous issues. And I think, Joe, you've done how many so far?
Excuse me, we have eleven so far.
Eleven so far since Joe's been on board with us. So, there's valuable information there and Joe does a great job of just recapping all the positive things that have gone on in our community. And you know, it's about a five-minute read. So, you can sit down, pull that email up once a month and in about five minutes, get a good caption of all the positive things that's going on in Walker County that this office has been affiliated with. We have people talk to us about potholes and we all are fighting the potholes and this time of year when you have a lot of cold weather and snow and ice that you deal with, you end up with more potholes. So, we've asked our public works team to start documenting and being able to account each month how many potholes they fill. And so, in January, they documented a hundred-and-eighty and in February, they documented four-hundred-and-fifty potholes. So, we got a lot of roads and we got a lot of potholes and they're working every month and hopefully, we'll have our plan in place later this year, we can start paving over some of these potholes and get our roads paved and deal with this with our T-Splosh dollars that we'll have. Our Walker County Transit had a busy month in February with one thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight trips to, that's individual destinations of riders. That was up over January and January's fifteen-hundred-and-one, but we had a couple of days in January where we were closed due to weather. So, we're running that fifteen-hundred, two-thousand range pretty much every month on our transit riders. So, great report, everyone's working hard, great information there. Okay, that officially ends our regular scheduled meeting. This is the time that we open the floor to open discussion and so, we're gonna do a little different this month. I'm gonna go first for some open comments. Many of y'all have noticed up here, a couple of weeks ago, the oldest building on the square, part of that building fell out into the street. And so, we have our court annex building that is attached to that building. And so, through the process of this catastrophic event that happened out here on the corner, we were able to work with the city and also the engineer that was representing the building owner that had the failure, they determined that our annex building was not safe for us to be in. And the reason for that is it has a shared wall. So, instead of having two separate walls that butt up against each other, it actually has a shared wall. And so, they are telling us that we do not need to be occupying that building until this all can be resolved. So, they're saying it could be three months, six months, it could be a year, nobody really knows because they have not fully determined all of the go-forward plans as far as the demolition of the building that failed. And also, the building on the square next to that, on the front side, is the Cunningham Law Firm. They have gotten damage also because they also had a shared wall and their building backs up to our building also.
It had a shared roof too.
Yeah, yeah, it did have a shared roof as well, so...
That has complicated.
Yeah, so it's gotten very complicated and very unsafe. So, the Cunningham Law Firm, they have evacuated that building and have moved out all of their records and files and all of their business items. We have been in our building a handful of times to pull out records and information and went in there and got all their computers and printers and everything because our Public Defender's Office is in that building. Also, one of our judges, Judge Peppers, who is a judge for state court, his office is there, Gretchen Neal, who is the drug coordinator, her office was there. And then, most importantly, our annex courtroom for primarily Superior Court and also Drug Court is in that building. Well, the challenge that we've got, that very next morning, I had about eleven people sitting here at this conference table saying, "Commissioner, where's our new office?" Because we can't get into our old office. And so, we had to spring into action very quickly and determine how we're gonna solve this problem because we've got eleven, twelve displaced staff members that have very important roles in our community. We also have a courtroom that's out of commission and we have jury trials coming up starting April twenty-third and they need this courtroom in order to keep everything on track in our court system. So, what we've been working on the last couple of weeks now is the building up here on Main Street that for years was called the Kitchen's Clinic Building. Most recently was the Tax Commissioner's Office and Tax Assessor's Office and Planning and Zoning was in that building. And they moved all of those offices up to the Rock Springs Complex a couple of years ago, but still in that building, up to this point, you had Environmental Health Services still had three or four offices in that building. Our county surveyor, Mr. Wardall, has his office there and there's another office in the downstairs as well that there's a program in there. There were several offices still there, but it's a big building, it's about a twelve-thousand square foot building. So, we've been working every day to do some renovations to that building because back before I took office, they took and put a brand-new white flat roof on it, put the state-of-the-art heating and air system that's set up by zones. And when you look at the structural integrity of that building, it's probably one of the strongest, best-built buildings that we own here in the cities for this county government. So, we are working to try to get everything set up and renovated so we'll be ready for jury trials in there to have an annex courtroom up there by April twenty-third. So, we're gonna need every day of that to get it done. So, we're not anticipating to have to do that, but fortunately, we had another building that we were not fully utilizing here close by to the main courthouse that's just right up the street, just a walk away. So, if you see a lot of activity up there, that's what we're working on. We're making great progress and feel like that we'll end up with a very nice office and courthouse. So, we hope that the annex building across the street here, at some point, sometime when that building is safe, we'll still have that building to utilize and figure out what the best use is for it is. But having a limited time schedule here, we couldn't wait to see how this is all gonna turn out because if, those of you who've kept up with this, this building fell, I guess it was two weeks ago today and it still very much looks like it did two weeks ago. So, it's not gonna move too fast. So, we just couldn't waste any time sitting back waiting. So, is there any questions or comments or anything about that project?
I've got a few words to say, but I didn't think that... Two years ago, when Kevin started showing signs deteriorating, the cheeseburger, cheeseburger fell and Chad, that guy called Channel Three, I tried to get news down here, I tried to get local people to get restores, restoring shows down here to preserve that piece of history. I was ignored and now people could have been killed. And there was no call for it. The wall, the property should have been seized by eminent domain. The Supreme Court gave the city and county the right to do so when they ruled for New Jersey in the case where they said when public good was there served by preserving or utilizing the property, that was legal to use eminent domain to seize and save that property and take it down before it fell. And then we wouldn't have had all these problems. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments on that topic? Okay, we'll open up the floor. Anybody else has anything? Yes, sir.
I was about to address the floor. As many people know, we've got another tax sale coming up in May. And on that sale, there's gonna be three hundred properties that's listed on the tax rolls as no value. And most of them are old mobile homes, abandoned mobile homes. Mobile home does not fit to be inhabited. But, the problem is, some of the, there is a good number of people who financially have not been able to pay the fire fee. They paid their property tax, but didn't pay the fire fee part of it. And several of them are just widows and some of them are disabled people and some of them are having to deal with after medicine just to pay their property tax. But the problem at hand is, is the fire fee is not being paid. So, the tax commissioner is gonna bring this up on the courthouse step to be sold again. Well, it's not usable property. And there needs to be some way to help these people or some way to alleviate the problem on this no-value structures for these people not to have to pay this fire fee on it. They're having to pay the fire fee on a piece of property just because it's standing there. And it's not, it's not inhabitable, has no power, most of them have no power, no water. It's just an abandoned structure. And Carol Walker had contacted a couple of companies, you see, about coming up with a way to dispose of them. And you're looking at a couple grand just to tear one down. And these people can't afford that. So, her concern is, and my concern is, is this is gonna, if we let it continually, it's gonna balloon to the point that there's people that's gonna lose their house because they couldn't pay the fee on a piece of, on a structure that was considered of no value. Because you can't sell them, nobody will buy them. Now, the reason there's three hundred is because there's over a hundred of them left over from the last tax sale and they sold one of them.
Well, that original hundred then, if it was from the last tax sale, would that have been prior to the changes in the fire fee?
Yes, some of that was.
But, my understanding from speaking to our tax commissioner in the past, this has been an ongoing problem for many, many years.
It has, but it's beginning to balloon because we're adding more fees to it.
Well, and a lot of it too is it's not been addressed in past administrations.
I understand that, that's why I'm bringing it up. It needs to be addressed in some manner. Because her hands is high and all she can do is put it on the courthouse steps and add additional fees to it as time goes on. And it's gonna balloon, it's gonna go from a couple, three hundred dollars on an old building to almost several thousand dollars. It's gonna balloon over time.
But those have become a blight in our community if they're not habitable.
Oh, yes, they are. Now, there are some, there are some on the list that people just, they can afford to do it, they just refuse to, you know? And I have mixed emotions about that. But a lot of these, it's people that they can't afford to pay somebody to tear it down. They're not capable of tearing it down themselves.
How does applying that program work in that situation?
Well, see, with our code enforcement, you know, we can go in and cite them for not beating the code standards, but when you've got, it's a little, kinda goes hand-in-hand, but it's a little bit different situation of what he's speaking of now that they've become defaulted on their taxes and fees.
Right.
Some probably want or the other, either the tax or the fee, or some with both. And so, that's where the tax commissioner is putting those up for tax sales. Many times when the tax commissioner does that, that motivates people to pay and get that taken care of or work out a payment plan with the tax commissioner to do so because if they didn't have the authority to do that and pursue that, then many people would refuse to pay, say, you know, what are they gonna do? So, it's, it puts county government in an awkward position.
It puts a lot of people in an awkward position because, you know, I mean, some people, you got, she told me of four cases that she knew of where it was a widow living by herself in her seventies trying to live on three hundred dollars a month. And, you know, they're having a hard time paying any extra fees. You know, but that, that's just, you know, just a small sample.
But the way, but the way the fire fee is now structured, many folks in smaller residents, anything under thirteen hundred square feet, got a reduction.
Yeah, I got a big reduction. Mine was cut in half because I live in a tiny house. Mine's only four hundred something square feet. But when you add a trailer that's got another eight or nine hundred feet on it setting out behind a house, you know, then theirs went up.
Yeah, if they've got more than thirteen hundred square feet, they would have taken somewhat of an increase. But many of these that I see around the county are single wide mobile homes and I'm sure would be under that thirteen hundred square feet. So, what do you feel the solution is?
I don't know. I mean, if I was twenty years younger, still had my construction equipment, I'd ride around and help people out, take my track hoe and I could destroy a trailer in ten minutes. Then it's no longer susceptible to a fire fee, it's laying on the ground. But, you know, I'm in my seventies, I'm retired, I don't have equipment anymore, nor the finances to do it. But something, there needs to be something worked out so that when you have a no-value piece of property that it shouldn't be adding a fire fee. That's my point.
Well, the situation we've got is abandoned piece of property is more likely to burn than one that's inhabited. Than one that's inhabited. And that's why a lot of insurance companies will not insure a property that's not being inhabited or being utilized. And so, it creates a greater risk for our community. It affects and devalues the property around it. It's a health risk if it is able to...
And the multitude of problems there.
Yeah. So, you know, I guess the best solution would be to figure out how to demolition and do away with those trailers in the most affordable manner. I don't know what that answer would be.
I don't know. Or recycle and then...
That's been addressed and the cheapest person and the tax commissioner could find was, even to do that was eleven hundred dollars and they keep everything that they could sell. You know, it's still...
Anybody else have any comment on that topic? Yes, Mr. Cantrell?
This is also a problem for zoning and, you know, and planning. The problem we inherit there is rundown property, unusable, no roofs, all of this in an area where we have people with nice homes or, you know, nice dwellings and stuff. It breaks down their property values, you know, no one wants to live next to two houses, it's empty and the roof's off of them. No one wants to live next to two houses, it's empty and the roof's off of them. And so, we have, in zoning and planning, have been trying to figure out a way to address that also, some way to get rid of those old properties. And we realize there's a lot of people that can't afford to tear them down. It's kind, like as he says, it's a, you're between a rock and a hard place. You know, we thought about bringing up some stuff like that the dump would accept the material for free under those circumstances, you know, could carry them to the, to the county dump. We've, we've tried to come up with some different ideas, you know, to handle some of that. But, you know, as long as people own the property and as long as there's something sitting on it, the tax commissioner's gonna tax you. And that's just the way it is. I mean, you know, it just works that way.
Well, I, I mean, that's only fair. You pay for the services that you receive, you know, and that's how it works.
And it's, it, it is gonna take some, there's, I don't know how many there are, I have no idea if there's that many. But, you know, we know there's a lot of them. We have a, a list of a lot of them.
Who, who says it has no value? Who, who determines that?
The, the tax assessor's office has determined that there are no values.
The right to do that.
Dirt's there, the property's, it's still in the ground.
It's not the property there, it's just the building.
Okay.
The, the, the mobile homes are taxed separately with the stickers.
So, it doesn't include the dirt?
Doesn't include the ground that it sits on.
Right.
The actual physical property of the ground is, is on a separate tax bill. And so, the actual physical property is taxed and those taxes are due December the twentieth. The mobile home stickers, first of April. So, those go out after the first of the year for the actual mobile home itself.
Is that when all of them goes out, they get your stickers or something like that?
After the first of the year, yeah.
Ever mobile home.
Every mobile home.
Every mobile home. It's a sticker or they, they can see it, right? If they, somebody runs by it, they get their sticker.
You actually let it out the door?
So, it's a separate tax bill that goes out on a separate timeline. So, it's all, that's the way it's, that's something that the way it has to be done by the state.
So, who's paying the tax on the dirt? Landowner?
Landowner.
Okay. So, if he's got thirty mobile homes on a piece of property, he pays the tax.
And then whoever has title to the mobile homes would be...
Yeah, mobile homes like a car, it's titled.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, it, it has a title, so that's why it's taxed everywhere.
Yeah.
Interesting.
But the owner's paying the tax.
Right. So, it'd be just like, another example would be if somebody has a property and they've got a vehicle sitting on it and they're under the old Avalorum tax system and they're sitting there paying tax on that vehicle every year. It's Avalorum tax.
But they're not paying the fire fee.
But they're, you know, it's not part of the physical dirt or physical land.
I know one property he's talking, similar to what he's talking about. I know the lady that, and her husband, of course, passed away, but, and it's an old mobile home. There's a tree growing out of it and they charged her a fire fee.
Yeah, it's at high risk, because it's got a tree coming out of it.
Exactly.
But she's not able to, you know, anyway. But I see what you're talking about.
So, so the gentleman that owns, the gentleman that owns the tract of land with the third mobile home, how does, does he have to pay the fire fee? Him being the property owner?
Well, it's individual structure, so it's gonna depend on who actually owns.
So, the third, okay.
Yeah, who actually owns each one of those mobile homes. It may or may not be the property owner, per se.
I understand.
All right, anything else? Anybody else have, any, any topic dealing with county government?
Does the city buy its electricity from the county?
No, I wish they did.
Because I got stuck with six hundred dollar bills.
But I'm not, the county's not in electricity business, unfortunately. I wish we were. But, not sure who the city buys the electricity from.
Georgia Power.
Georgia Power, you think? So, yeah, the, the only, the closest utility that the county's involved in is the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, which has its own governing and board, but it's kind of a side-by-side with the county.
We just talked about who the county will pay or the jackup in our faces.
Yeah, that would be on your power, that would be, be the, the city would be an item they would have to, to get involved with, with you on. Okay, anything else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on this Erlinger thing, is, how much money has been collected? And has there already been one payment made or, I think you said that, one payment's been made?
Right.
So, how are the collections going? Is it gonna be more than what's needed? At the end of the year, is it gonna be some left over to be applied towards next year, towards this payment? And if at the end of two years, if that money's been collected and paid out, will the property taxes, will that fee, our, our tax be taken off?
Well, when we looked at that Erlinger fee, we had several challenges. One was, we didn't know a hundred percent sure what the, what the outcome was gonna be with Erlinger.
Right.
Because they were threatening and had filed additional lawsuits. And we were also looking at potentially additional attorney fees and interest and so forth. Also, when you set something up like that on any figure tax, you don't know ever how much you're going to collect totally. I mean, you can run the numbers, but as this gentleman indicated, there's at least three hundred property owners.
They refuse to pay, so you don't know.
You know, so you don't know what you're gonna collect.
But how much has already been collected?
I don't have the exact number, but it, I know there's been over...
I, here, here is the number, it's the twenty-eighth.
Okay. It's the twenty-eighth.
How much money and what percent?
Okay, there's been ninety-one percent collected, which is, round number's three-point-nine million dollars is what this is showing. I guess it's come from the tax commissioner.
The commissioner.
Okay. So, round number's three-point-nine million dollars has been collected. That doesn't mean next year ninety-one percent. We don't know how much is gonna be collected. We don't know how much the third year's gonna be collected. But also too, there was, a lot of people forget, there was another loan that was made by the previous administration from Regions Bank that exceeded well over four million dollars. I think it's about four-point-seven?
I was thinking six.
Four-point-six million dollars or so that the county fronted the money for, for that as well. So, there was two loans.
Okay, I thought this was, this tax was just for the Erlinger. And it was what, what was the total on that? Eight-point-seven?
Eight-point-seven is what the settlement was with Erlinger. Answer your question on the fact, there has been, the first payment was made on time, which was six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And then, the second payments due, you know, ninety days from that.
Right.
So, you've got twelve payments at six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And then, you've got a balloon payment, I think it's, it comes out around nine-hundred-thousand dollars. So, you know, having over a ninety percent collection is great, but don't know what the, what's gonna happen in the economy and so on and so forth. But, we will follow that ordinance that was put in place and in three years, it will definitely come off completely.
Sure, but one after two years, that full amount, I mean, it's, you would be collecting more than what is owed to them if you have more money left. What happens to that money?
Well, we'd have to comply with the, with the ordinance that's in place. We can't take that money and, and go buy police cars with it or go and build an industrial park with it or buy another farm or any, can't do crazy with it, okay? We have to follow the guidelines and so it would have to be used for public health facilities in, in general's way that's laid out. And so, that is designated funding per that ordinance that will only last for three years.
Okay, what, okay, just supposing, the majority of it's there and, and can you adjust that tax down?
That's a possibility that that could be done, that possibly an option that could be done. Because too, you don't know what your, your values of your properties are gonna be either. They can go up, they can go down.
They always go up.
No, they don't always go up. They don't always go up.
Over, over, it's close to forty-seven percent of the properties in the county actually went down.
So, there's so many variables.
It, it, it changes continually.
Yeah, there's so many variables and so many things that, that we cannot control. And so, yes, on the surface, it looks like we're on the path in the right direction. We were able to negotiate a more favorable settlement with Erlinger, you know, so there's a lot of things. So, really, it's really too early to tell when we're, what, ninety days into this?
I'm just asking if it's going to be addressed and discussed.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we're very open and transparent with all of this and so, it'd be very well dis, you know, talked about and reviewed of, you know, what, what we do once we start reaching the, the end of that cycle.
And perhaps even the fire fee also because already more is collected than there was two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, we knew there would be, absolutely. Yeah, we knew that, that there would be. But what was happening, see, on the fire fee, is the county general fund was also subsidizing the fire services. So, even with what we projected the collections to be, we took and lowered their budget by fifty thousand dollars. So, the fire department is operating with less dollars, but all of their funding is now coming a hundred percent from the public safety fee or was the fire fee now. So, a hundred percent of that funding's coming from there. But here's one thing that we've, that we've not even addressed in the fire department yet. We've got some aging equipment and things that we're having to do a lot of repairs and maintenance. So, we need a long-range plan on equipment and things. There's a lot of needs there for our public safety that we've not even begun to address.
So, that won't go down?
Don't ever look for the, I, I really don't look for that ever to go down on the public safety fee. And what you'll see in the numbers is that service is even being called upon even more. Back in, where's the last page? You know, I was looking last night, when I was talking about this on the air, if you just took, we're running an average of five-hundred-seventy-five calls a month. Ninety percent of those calls have nothing to do with the fire. It's all medical related. So, we're in a, a community where we're all living longer, people are, are calling on those services to save lives. And so, we're on our way to, to do over seven thousand calls in two thousand eighteen. So, if we were sitting here and we looked at our call volume and it was going down, we could say, well, hey, we've got, we've got too much. But people are calling nine-one-one and calling for services, so, you know, on the average over the last two months, five-hundred-and-seventy-five times, somebody picked up the phone and said, "I need the fire department." So, it's, it's, there's a high demand there. Good questions, though.
Do we have a contingency plan for drug-involved fires and stuff as far as hazmat coming in and helping us clean up hazmat labs and stuff?
I would have to defer to Chief Hodge on that as far as what their plans are on. I wouldn't be the best to speak to that. I wish he would've been here tonight, but I'm sure he's still on that rescue, but we'll, maybe the next meeting, he can talk to us about that.
Which cave is it?
Which cave is that?
Head of Johns.
Head of Johns Cave.
Oh, the logo.
Oh, boy.
No, that's a good one. That ain't, that's no far from it.
Okay, what else tonight? All right, well, thank you all for coming and participating and being a part of your county government and look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. If you'll notice on the last page of your agenda, we've already announced a special call meeting on Wednesday, March the twenty-first at twelve fifteen P.M. And the reason for that will be the opening of the request for proposals for our Walker County landfill where we're looking to do a, a transfer of our C and D waste for a period of time. So, it's just a meeting that will primarily be to address just the opening of those proposals. And then, on the next day, is our regular scheduled meeting on March the twenty-second at six P.M. where we hope to be able to make a decision and award the contract on those. So, y'all be safe tonight and don't forget, the time changes Sunday night and you lose an hour of sleep. So, have a good week. Thank you.